Call me in order. Certified compliance with the open records law.
Yes.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Hayden.
Here.
Councilmember Hooker.
Here.
Councilmember Menke.
Here.
Councilmember Resar.
Here.
Councilmember Weisenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Weisappel.
Here.
Next I have the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Someone like to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion is clear. Next we move on to public comments. It's an opportunity for the public to speak to the council on anything that is on the agenda or any other item. Just please identify yourself for the record.
Thanks, please.
I apologize to the members of the safety committee since you've already heard some of this, however, since it was a discussion at the last council meeting, I'd like to make sure the entire council hears my remarks as well. Hello, I'm Pam Hanson, the Pepin County Administrative Coordinator. As Mr. Rasmussen pointed out at the last Pepin County Law Enforcement Meeting held on 10/2 and which was reported in the newspaper, I do not run the sheriff's office. Per my job description, here's what I am responsible to do. Coordinate and facilitate the ongoing operations of Pepin County departments, programs, services, and fiscal matters. Prepares analysis reports and recommendations for county board and committees. Because of my role at the county, I often recognize issues occurring or I'm routinely made aware of issues that other, that occur at the county in many of our departments. I often get involved when communications become strained or issues need to be escalated to a higher level for discussion. During this process, I will gather information, analyze it, and then in the end, make my recommendations. In some situations, not everyone likes the information I gathered, present, or my recommendations. One issue that was brought to my attention and has been ongoing since early in 2022 has been staffing issues the county is facing as a result of a change in the City of Duran Police On-Call Policy and weekend shifts left unstaffed by the City of Duran Police Office. Thus, the first legal opinion I received titled "Police Protection Obligations of Municipalities and Counties Under Wisconsin Law" dates back to March 23rd of 2022. Since that time, many discussions and strings of emails began to occur. In reviewing the strings of emails, I noted a request from our sheriff to Mr. Rasmussen dating back to August 4th, 2022, asking to add us to the next City of Duran Public Safety Committee meeting agenda to discuss the intentions of the city of no longer taking any on-call time and not covering up to 16 hours during the day on Saturdays and Sundays. This meeting agenda request was not granted. A meeting to discuss the issues was then organized and held last fall on September 21st, 2022. Unfortunately, the meeting meant to discuss issues and to attempt to problem solve occurred after a decision had already been made by the city council regarding the on-call issue. Unfortunately, the meeting on September 21st between the county and city leaders was described, again just last week, by Mr. Rasmussen as contentious. Since that time, many emails have been exchanged. The email exchanges involve Mr. Rasmussen's public comment just last week, again at the law enforcement meeting, included the phrase "seems hypocritical" when referring to sheriff's office actions. Thus, based on unproductive strings of emails, less than respectful or contentious conduct in private meetings, and an increasing number of open shifts with the current on-call policy in place, I requested on July 31st, 2023, that we would like to review the City of Duran Police Department off-duty response policy with the city council. It was suggested that, but it was suggested by the city administrator that perhaps if an issue existed, it was more appropriate, it was a more appropriate committee-level discussion. I stated, if it was referred to the Public Safety Committee, please let us know when the next meeting was scheduled, where it would be on the agenda. The recent email strings included both the mayor, county board chair, and city administrator. The counter requests to be on a city agenda, again, were not granted. Thus, I stand before you today as a leader who recognized we had issues and has collected data for discussion purposes and to be able to make my recommendation to our county committees and board. Regarding the weekend unstaffed shifts, here is the data I requested and was given from our sergeant that was compiled once access had been given from the Duran Police Department and scheduling software. So we have it from the Public Safety Committee meeting. Those of you that don't, if you'd like a copy, let's see if you have it. Copy for you. Copy for you.
Thank you.
In the several months prior to July and August I have referred to, which would be April, May, and June, you can note yourself what caused staffing coverage issues for the county. As a result, the county had to adjust staffing to meet the emergency obligations countywide. I will also share with you a copy of the current City of Duran Police Department Off-Duty Response Policy that became effective 1/1/2023, even though I would think most of you are aware of the policy that followed your vote last September 2022. Note that this policy states the city is no longer attempting to be a 24-hour agency. Thus, some nighttime hours are now being left unstaffed. The policy also states the order for officers to be called out, but to the best of my knowledge, none of these officers are paid to formally be on-call to always be available to respond to emergencies in the City of Duran. As a result, the county had to adjust staffing to meet our emergency obligations countywide and maintain deputy safety. So here we are today, following a few newspaper articles with titles meant to increase readership, following comments at public meetings, and many opinions that have been aired along the way. Not an ideal path for any of us to take, as I would have preferred discussions as agenda items at public meetings which were proactively requested. However, at least now people are aware of the issues, and I'm hopeful they will get the discussion it deserves at the committee and board budget and policy decision-making level. To facilitate those discussions, I will share with you a follow-up legal memo to the one The initial memo that I obtained and mentioned earlier was an attorney-client privileged document. The follow-up memo I requested from our legal firm that I've distributed to you all today is not. It addresses the statutes and law enforcement obligations of counties and local municipalities. By sharing all this data, I hope you will use it as you consider the agenda item on your safety committee agenda regarding hiring an additional full-time police officer. Staffing issues are tough for us all and could progressively get worse for us all if these issues are left unaddressed. It will not serve any of our residents well if we all do not do our parts to solve the issues that surround us all at this time. Thank you for your time and thanks again for your service.
Any other public comments? No scheduled appearances? Next, move on to the consent agenda. The following matters may be acted upon by the city utilizing a single vote. Individual items which any member wishes to address in greater detail, there's a separate item on the regular agenda may be removed from the consent agenda upon the request of any council member. We have the minutes from the regular city council meeting from September 27th, 2023. Barton is licensed for Julie L. Bogstad for the Dollar General.
Everything's fine.
Somebody make a motion concerning the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no? It's approved. Next, move on to the business agenda. Got it with the mayor's report. Not really too much to talk about, of course, a lot of budgeting and stuff going on and so on. I would like to mention, though, since our last meeting, as we had mentioned, that we were out making some fundraising calls on some folks concerning the pool. I want to say that a number of those meetings have started to take place in the last week or so, and I also would like to report, it seems to be some real positive things out there in the community. At the end of the day, I think going out with bids that we know where we're at and where we need to be, I think, has been helpful to explain about trying to raise as much money as possible because of the fact that we would like to include as many of those extras or alternate things and so on, I think has also, also been, been helpful. So, again, as we said, we're pushing through with those. You know, obviously, some people make quicker decisions than others, but hopefully, we're going to see some positive things. Do appreciate everybody who's been participating in these with Council President Hooker and City Administrator Rasmussen and so on, and by the way, I do appreciate the efforts of getting out and seeing those things, and hopefully, we'll see some positive things happen here in the next few weeks. Any questions? We didn't move anything off the consent agenda. Move on to administrative report. Administrator Rasmussen.
Just a couple items, and one of them, a little bit of a broken record. We are still looking for anyone who has any interest in any of our block grant loans, low-income housing, block grant pieces. We had another discussion with our representative at CERCOR, and I imagine we'll have some discussions with them again next week at our LEAK meeting, and hopefully, talk to some others out there that I guess a real benefit of the LEAK meeting is the ability to talk to peers from all over the state who are experiencing similar issues. So that's certainly one that I'm going to be talking about. Another one that we just kind of came out of committee and talked about on just a little bit of Public Works is, it would be great if the LEAK could do some sort of salary analysis for it. I don't think they've ever really gotten into that, but I think that would be very helpful, as you saw, Chief Ridgeway has done some on his own, Director Gillis as well, and we're working with another local municipality that's done some, but boy, a statewide one would be great, and so that's another thing that we'll be talking about next week at that LEAK meeting. Just a quick budget update, obviously, we're through a number of our committees. Public Works was a two-plus hour meeting the other night, and that encompasses well over half of our total city budget with the utilities involved, and obviously, public safety tonight, and a lot of good information there. So basically, all that we have left is the administrative part of things and our general revenues, which will occur at the finance meeting, and then ultimately, the finance committee will look at our total budget and come up with a normal rate and an advertisement in the paper for the public hearing in November. As a reminder again, that committee meeting will be the 23rd of October, Monday, our first day back after our meetings next week. And yeah, we'll go over everything there and numerous questions, I'm sure, and if there's a need for any other kind of meeting between that and the November 15th public hearing, you know, certainly, we can have some more discussions of, so for example, if anyone felt that after tonight's meeting on the discussion of a police officer, if you'd like to have another meeting before that, certainly, we could have that. So again, I just, I throw that out there as, as options. But with that, again, you've heard some of the budgetary notes, I mean, revenue-wise, obviously, with the additional state shared revenues and our increased equalized valuation, increased, you know, street aid and things like that, you know, we're sitting pretty good. I'm just going to wait on that health insurance piece, it's always a big deal every year that we never get to, well, the end of October at the earliest. So with that, I thank you for all your help, both staff and obviously council, and we're well on our way. So thanks again.
Any questions for the state administrator? They're done. Move on to the public safety. Police Department, Chief Crickway?
Yeah, you have my monthly report. Just have a couple of things. I want to give you an update. Our night squad is out of service right now. We had a leaky water pump. It's going to be repaired under warranty, thankfully, but it'll be out of service until next Friday, so it'll be short squad car. Truck-or-treat event Saturday, October 28th, 3 o'clock, street will be closed at 2 for setup. Should be a great turnout. We're getting some good numbers in again this year for organizations that are joining us for that event, so looking forward to that. Last week, we did an ALICE training. ALICE is the response that school districts use for active threat situations. I did a PowerPoint, they had the entire staff there, caddywood lawn and middle school and high school. I did a PowerPoint presentation for them, talking about ALICE and the response, and then we, Brandon did the scenario portion of it in the hallway with all school staff. I assisted in with those. It was a great training, a good couple hours with the staff, just training on active threat responses for the school. Refresher for some teachers, but they do have a lot of new staff as well, so it was the first time to work through some of the scenarios that we went through. And overall, I thought it was a great training. Heard from some staff members that had great things to say about us, so it was nice to work with those, that group on that training. And that's all I have.
Any questions for the police department? Fire Department, Chief King?
You guys got the agenda in front of you. Month of September, we had eight calls in the fire department. They're all listed below there. Couple things to touch on, there is firefighter one class, which is the entry level portion of becoming a firefighter. I just got confirmation here about a week ago that the class is in Duran, so the three new members we put on this summer here will be attending that class, but there'll also be some surrounding departments at that training, too.
How many, how many users do they have for a class like that?
This is going to be a large class. I think they're 18 to 22 right now. There's a lot of new membership in local agencies around us that are needing the training, so. The college likes using our facility because it's got a nice meeting room with projector, sound system, and the equipment, so it makes it nice for our members because they don't have to drive and be gone away from their home. The training is usually 6 o'clock till 10 o'clock, 9 o'clock at night, so it's nice when it's local, they get home, get to bed earlier versus driving. Fire prevention will be in all the schools, 3K to 2nd grade will be in full swing here in the next few weeks, getting fire prevention done in all the schools. We did get a grant, the Earl, from the DNR for a $7,000 grant. We're going to put that to the new brush truck pump, so we did receive that here a couple weeks ago. And then the Fire Relief Association, we applied through and got a $3,958 grant to purchase a new hose tester, and that was through Compier Financial. I didn't put that on there, but it was Compier. We will be doing Facebook reach outs to Compier. And then there's a group of five of us going to Pierce on a ladder truck this Friday, and we got to finalize the sketch drawings and sign off on that for Friday. Our last meeting is actually started right now at the fire station with the members, and then Friday, we drive down to sign off on print approval, which is like, the price ain't going to change, it's like, where do you want the drawers or the shelves and positioning and stuff? So it's just the nitty-gritty of it, the base price is what we already agreed to sign off on, but it's just the little stuff that we'll be going down there, so that's all I have.
Any questions for the fire department? Move on to ambulance, Director Brinkley?
All of you guys have the ambulance run report. We had 29 calls in September, we were able to make 28 of those, zero missed 911 calls. We have four transfer requests, three of them which were completed. The transfers were from Advent to Sacred Heart, Wabashada to Eagle's Rest, Wabashada to Land Ovi, and Wabashada to Eagle Rest. Our newest member is Amanda Manor, she is an EMT. And our CBTC EMR slash EMT one class will be ending on the 19th, and there is talking about posting the EMT two portion right after. That's all I have.
That class isn't going to conflict with your F firefighter one class, is it?
That would be up to CBTC, no?
No, because it's the same, Mark Schwartz, the director at CBTC does the scheduling for fire and EMTs, so.
Staggered.
We're starting, end of January, so I don't know when that's.
Yeah, they're talking right away after October.
Any other questions for ambulance? Move on to public work. Engineers report, Russ?
Yes, two quick project updates. First one, Madison Street project, design continuing to be in process. We did hold a public information meeting on October 2nd for the Madison Street project. We had 11 business owners and residents that attended that meeting, a little bit on the light side, but we did present the concept plan, construction schedule, and so forth. Had a lot of good input and conversation with those business owners and residents that did attend. And you get further down on the agenda, Matt and I will be covering the Madison Street project, concept plan, council. The other item, the 12th Avenue East project, over next to Dollar General, that project's complete. Cedar Corp is in the process of putting together the paperwork for the grant reimbursement through the Wisconsin DOT Local Road Improvement Program. I think that amount's about $18,000, like that? Somewhere around here.
$9,700.
Yeah, okay. So that'll be submitted in a few weeks here, getting money back for that project. The other project we're working on is the water filter plant, proposed rehab project. We're in the process of putting together Wisconsin DNR Clean Water Fund, intend to apply scoring application. That's due by the end of October, so we're on schedule to submit that by that deadline date. That gets submitted, they score it based on the information regarding the project, and usually here in May, how the project scored, and then if you continue to the next round for app, for funding. And it's basically a combination low-interest loan, and they call it principal forgiveness, which is basically a grant. And that's a federal-funded program, so that has, again, a lot of that bipartisan infrastructure law money in that pot now, where they've increased the principal forgiveness and they've adjusted their scoring criteria, so we'll see where that project goes. That's all I have.
Any questions for city engineer? September 4th, Lieutenant Kellis?
A couple of quick things, other than what's below here. Our new permit for the wastewater treatment plant came into effect October 1st, just some few minor changes and some testing, as I've been telling you both, but otherwise, the rest of our limits all pretty much stayed the same, so we're good for five more years till 2028 before we have to go through the process again. Summer projects are pretty much wrapping up. Parks will be closing next week. Next week, we will be in the process of winterizing all the parks and all of the sprinkler systems and everything in town, and we'll be moving into our, kind of our fall, our fall. See any question to throw at our, and then what's next?
What is involved with winterizing a park?
So like, Terrence Park and Memorial Park all have bathrooms that have to be tore down, blown out. The campground has all underground plumbing that has to be blowed out and disassembled. We have sprinkler systems in various parks that all have to be disassembled and blowed out for the winter, and then some of them have, some of the lines have antifreeze pumped in to preserve them for the winter.
Okay. Now we're going to move on to discussion of possible action regarding the 2024 Madison Street Reconstruction Project. As some, already slow discussion about this, we did have a public meeting back, well, a week ago Monday, right? A week? Back on the, we did have about 14, 15 people show up, and they registered, and also, a lot of good questions. I always said, tell people when this is, "Come to the meeting." They look swilt. We got Cedar Corp people there, we got city staff there, and I even talked, obviously talked to some people at the, at the event, and it seems like people got their questions answered, so on, so that's always good. So great job by everybody here. Okay, so who wants to go in? Because again, basically, what we're looking tonight is the concept, the final thing we're to move forward to make the final plans. I mean, that's what.
Correct. Tonight, we're just basically approving this type of concept, and then we got a lot of work to do as far as the engineering goes with the water, the wastewater, the storm and all that, but we're basically need to approve the final concept that I'll walk through with you tonight, pretty much exactly the same as what we walked through the last council meeting before, before the public meeting. As the mayor said, the public meeting, like we said, we had about a dozen people here. I've had probably three or four phone calls this week, a couple last week. We've actually talked to some people in person. Everyone seems to be, oh, hands down, in favor of this concept. The biggest concern with everybody that was here at the committee meeting that we've talked to has been parking downtown. They're all in favor of adding parking, as much parking as we can get downtown. Some of the questions were, how can we add more parking than we're already adding through this project? So all in all, no negatives towards this concept, just a couple people obviously saying it's just going to take time to get used to the, the one-way streets, so. But I didn't have anybody in probably the 20 people I've talked to through the meeting and through the phone calls that really opposed much of this project at all. So just kind of a quick run-through, and then we can talk about the concept. We're starting down at 8th Avenue. Not much, again, is changing down there, pretty much staying the same till we get up to, till we get up to about the grocery store there. Move up a little bit there. Again, you're going to have a seven-foot, we're narrowing this stretch of street. It's currently 45 feet wide, does not need to be that far to have two driveways and two parking lanes, so we get a nice grass boulevard in here on the Econo side, sorry, the fresh market side of the, of the road project. We get fire hydrants, water services, we can get our telephone, the XLR, get the telephone poles out of the sidewalk, and it gives us a good finishing or furnishing zone between the street and, and the sidewalk. Coming up here, again, we, we have a little bump out here because we have to get ADA'd to this building. We are matching the curb since we're narrowing the street here. We bring this curb out, and we slowly start transitioning this curb back to the wide street so we can get angled parking. Currently, right now, there's parallel parking on this side of the street. We're going to change that to angled parking on that side of the street. Coming up the 4th Avenue here, again, the concept of 4th Avenue, we will take the, I use the term bump outs, but we will take the curb out, about halfway out into the street on both sides of 4th, we will turn 4th into a one-lane road, and then we can, one lane, as in traffic, will be coming from Main to Madison, and we can turn that into angle parking on both sides, gain four extra spots. Some of the questions were handicap. There's currently handicap on these side streets right now, they will remain on those side streets, plus we could probably add an extra handicap spot here. The handicaps will be on, on the ends so we can get out and access the sidewalk right away. So we won't be getting rid of handicap, they will be staying on the avenues, if not even adding one more handicap spot on each avenue compared to what we have right now. Moving down the street, again, here by the old museum down here in the bottom of the page, not much is changing there, pretty much the same. Come up to 3rd, we bring the curbs out for handicap accessibility onto the sidewalk ramps, and we can change 3rd Avenue from parallel to angled parking and still keep a two-lane street on 3rd. We have an extra wide street there. Real wondering why that's extra wide, it's the old highway that came into town there, so we can change that into angle and gain more parking through there. Again, not much changes behind the, or in front of Wamondy there, still angled parking on both sides of the street. on both sides of the street. We are actually, no parking in what you see these two spots here, that's the old image. We're, we're widening the driveline, we don't have enough room. Currently, right now, we don't have two legal driveways through there and parking on both sides, so there will be no parking right here where you see my, my mouse rolling through there.
And that should be helpful, anybody pulling out of the driveway next to Wamondy, because that's, can be sort of a blind guy, that's not the.
Correct. Moving to Second Avenue West, again, we will change this street to a one-way. This street will be a one-way, it'll be going from Madison to Main. You pull in, we'll have angle parking on one side, parallel on the other, not wide enough for angle on both streets, plus a one-lane street. You can see these grass areas that will be adding into the area, lot, lots of things we can do there, but we got plenty of time to talk about those in the future. And then First Avenue, we will be turning First Avenue into a one lane, it'll be one lane from Main to Madison. We can turn one side of that into angle and the other side, parallel. We need to do, mostly do this so that we can achieve ADA compliance from the sidewalks. Currently, right now, the ADA ramps are eight to twelve percent, code is two. So, a lot of it is, number one, ADA compliance, and number two, it, it gains a ton of parking downtown. With this concept, we gain a total of roughly seventeen parking stalls from one end of the project to the other. Basically, I'm sorry, from First Avenue to Fourth Avenue, we gain a total of seventeen parking stalls downtown. And then in front of the park here, we just narrow that up a little bit. We don't need forty-five feet, so we get bigger grassy boulevard on the park side and a little grass on the other side for, again, a furnishing zone. The one thing that kind of gets lost is it's a lot easier to put a, we, we need a little bit of a furnishing zone between the curb and the sidewalk. Well, I put a lot of our water services, fire hydrants, things like that, and matching the elevations is a lot easier with grass than it is to try and match concrete up to the buildings, so. Basically, tonight, we just want to approve this concept. You're not approving anything other than the design concept of this right here. For those of you wondering, probably a little easier up here, this is the map of the project, so Main Street, stoplights are over here, you're coming down, take a left on the first and be a one-way. Can take left or right on Madison, Madison will be a two-way. Second Avenue will be a one-way this way, so you can make, basically make a loop. Third Avenue will stay two-lane, and then Fourth Avenue will be one-way off of Main Street. You can go either way on Madison Street, and then Fifth Avenue will remain a two-lane street.
And just for clarification, just the one block is changing? As far as one-ways?
Correct.
Is there any, I forgot to ask you the other night, is there any change in like street lighting, where we have like some of those increased areas where there's additional cars, I mean, just safety-wise?
Everything on Madison Street is lighting off of XL's power poles. We don't physically have any of our own, shouldn't say that, we do pay for that lighting on their poles, but it's arms off of their power poles. We don't have any decorative lighting like you see on Main Street. So there isn't anything, as far as adding lighting, that would, that's a no unless there's a power pole that doesn't have an arm on it that I could potentially add an arm to in that area. So I'm limited on what I can do with lighting on that street.
I'm more concerned of the, the avenues, that some of those get pretty dark at night.
Lighting in here. Unfortunately, in this project, we don't have any lighting, like decorated lighting.
Yeah. Just a question, Ted.
Good question.
Some things that people don't understand, like Main Street and Second Avenue are decorative light poles, and then the rest of the town is just arms off of XL's wooden power poles.
And will they change those occasionally if we request it?
Yeah, so they do all the maintenance, we pay for the lighting, and through the lighting, there's a, you know, a factored-in maintenance program, so any of those lights that are out, you go on their website, fill out an outage report, they come and fix it, change it, they will move those on request, you gotta fill out requests from them, and they will move them and switch them around as we request.
So the project starts at Second Avenue East, correct?
Correct. The project starts at, at the edge of Second Avenue East and goes all the way to Eighth Avenue West. Turns the corner a little bit on Eighth Avenue West.
Will Second Av, will that be blocked off? Second Ave, or will that be passable through?
Second Avenue will be, will be passable. Basically, your road close signs will be right here going down, so we won't be digging out, and we see the pink line come out, that's just kind of a match line when we, when we blacked out, but we won't be digging out into Second Avenue to restrict any traffic on Second Avenue. So again, essentially, tonight, we're just essentially approving this concept so we can move forward with, with the design, and your approval to switch basically these streets to one-lane roads.
As we discussed at Public Works, and, and obviously Matt and I beforehand, and Russ, we thought if there was gonna be any controversy, it was gonna be with the one, one-way streets and the bump outs, and frankly, we didn't hear any.
Nah, everybody was, was, I will say, everyone I talked to was one-hundred percent favor of, of this design and creating more parking downtown. It just will be a learning transition for everyone, and it will be signed, right? So it'll be one-way signs here, and there'll be two do-not-enters here, and there'll be one-way only here, two do-not-enters here, so we will, it will be signed, but again, somebody's been doing something for fifty, sixty years, doesn't mean they won't try to keep doing it.
Wonder, are there ways to like temporarily put like flashing something on those signs?
Yeah, we, we, I mean, there's lots of things we can do. We can get, you know, temporary flashing lights on those signs, we could get sign, some sign boards, right? We could, during the summer months, not so much the winter, I've seen in towns, you know, we'll put like road barricades up so that you can really only get through a one-way to try and educate people, they'll do that for summer. There, there's a few things that we can.
A couple of those, right? They, they bump way out, so you almost would have to make it seem like you're driving in the opposite lane.
Yeah, so like, for example, First Avenue here, when you're coming down First Avenue from Prospect Street to this stop sign right here, this is bumped out all the way to the center line of the road, so you would literally have to cross or into oncoming traffic to, to go down the wrong way here, right? So, this one, this one would be the problem, since it, since it's do-not-enter on Main Street, this is gonna be the one that's probably gonna take some education the most on, you know, when people coming down Main Street thinking they can turn here. This, this will be the one that gives us the most problem as far as people potentially going the wrong way. But again, we can put flashing lights up for a summer, we can put barricades up for a summer to try and educate them. But if I see any issue with one-way, it's this one right here. Again, this one is coming off of Main Street, and these curbs are, are so tight, when you get to here, you, you have to blatantly go right through, across the center line and go through there to get in there, so. This is the only one in my mind that we will have the hardest education on.
Where do most of the, like, people that are putting their bolts in, which ones do they come up out of?
Oh, it's all underwater, according to this.
I know.
So, most of, it's not on the map, but most of them, most of them come up First Avenue.
At First or Second, okay. Because at the bottom, that's a one-way, it's underwater there.
Any other questions?
Questions? From Matt or Russ, or anything on it?
No, we didn't talk about this at Public Works, and we have time to figure it out yet, but from what, the music festivals or Fun Fest and/or music in the parks and blues.
Yeah, we haven't, we have not gotten into a work schedule yet, we're still, obviously, you, you approved this design, and then we gotta get into getting all the water and sewer and storm in here, and then over the course of the next probably month and a half is when we will get into the bidding documents, which essentially lays out the work schedule and where we want them to start, what we want them to do, how we wanna do, that type of stuff. We, we do control, you know, we want them to start here and go that way, we want them to start down there and come this way, we want them to start in the middle, you know, we do, we do control that, we put that in the bidding documents, so we have some control over that, but once they start, they gotta keep going, so can't, even if they start in the middle and we think they won't be to here by Fun Fest, but if they are, we gotta let it keep going, you know, so we, we can control most of it.
And the subject came up when we were talking to somebody from, that's involved with one of the groups, and, and said about like big holes. I said, the one thing about it is that we don't have as many utilities on this street as we do a number, some other ones. So there is gonna be some digging, but it's not like everything's gonna be completely dug up twenty feet down, and, is, I mean.
The only utility that you don't have as much of is sanitary sewer, so you still have.
That's, that's a big thing.
Yeah, that, that's usually the deepest utility.
That's the deepest, yeah.
So, so the old sanitary just runs through, straight through the intersections until you get down to Fifth, and then from, from Fifth Avenue down, you have sanitary in, in the middle of the road that will have to be dug up. But from, from basically Fourth to Second, you just basically have sanitary that's kind of running through the intersection. We will be digging through the intersections to replace that, but it's not a full-length dig, and you don't have sanitary services to every building, so that cuts down a, a number of trenches, right? Because every building's a separate trench when you go to dig a service in.
What did Adam have to say when he was here?
Um, all great things about, about the parking, you know, that's pretty much, their, his number-one issue is parking.
So he's not concerned of customers accessing that while?
We talked a little bit, I mean, that's obviously a concern, access during the project. We talked about making sure that he gets access, we'll work with him every day. There's obviously gonna be times where he just can't when we have a hole right in front of the building, right? But there, if we can scoot you out on the side, get you, you know, if it's possible to get enough vehicles in, in here for the, for the time period, but we're more than willing and gonna work with him to make sure we get his vehicles in and out of there on the time periods that they may be digging in front. When it comes to pouring concrete, we'll pour half the pad at one time so he'll have access to the other half, and then when that half we poured cures, we'll pour the other half so he can drive over the half that's cured. So, there's pretty typical-type plans like that that we work in, into these projects. I mean, it's, it's gonna be a mess, you know, we'll know if, answer what's about it, it's gonna be a dirt road mess. We do not leave open holes overnight unless there's an emergency or an urgent need to do that. There might be a few spots when we're doing, we're getting rid of the coal shoots on these avenues for about five buildings. We might have some open holes that have to stay open overnight while we're potentially shoring up those buildings, but otherwise, in the middle of the street, when we're digging water and sewer and all that stuff, all that gets covered at the end of the night. Again, unless there's some type of an emergency for it, it not get covered. But there's gonna be piles of concrete laying around, there's gonna be piles of pipe laying everywhere, there's gonna be piles of dirt laying everywhere, and some of these spots, you might not even be able to drive through there, you know, downtown at night, which you have no reason to drive through there because you don't, you know, these people can, everyone can park on Main Street and walk in and access on the Main Street side.
Sorry, Mr. Ray. One thing that we could look at is potentially foregoing our parking restrictions on Main Street, if we're gonna have this avenues torn up, Madison torn up, it kind of, kind of restricts a lot of parking for people that live downtown, so it's something we could talk about.
Because we can post the project, we can work out some, you know, periods of time that we don't.
Getting rid of our three-to-five parking, whatever that timeframe is.
Will they be able to park overnight? Any, like year-round in the avenues then?
Yeah, because currently, none of that'll be changing, so, so as of right now, the avenues, you can park year-round overnight except for a snow emergency, that will stay the same. So actually, overnight parking downtown probably gets the biggest increase with all these, with all this avenue out parking. Main and Madison are the only two streets that have the, Chief, correct me here, is three to six, or four to, four to six, or whichever, whatever the timeframe is there?
Two to six.
I'm not sure what the exact time is on that one.
Yeah, I have to look it up, too. But Main and Madison are the only two streets that have that restriction.
Okay. Any more questions?
I'll make the motion to go ahead with the 2024 Madison Street reconstruction designs as, as is.
Second. Second, we have a motion in a second that we go ahead with the design for the 2024 Madison Street reconstruction project. Any more discussion? Any more questions? Again, is this against most of the citizens? If you can't answer, just refer down here, talk to Matt, talk to Scott, we can get somebody from Cedar Corp if that, somebody absolutely wants to speak to somebody. But the nice thing about it is, of course, when the project's going through, we got people from Cedar Corp here basically every day, manager on site, construction manager and stuff, and that helps. Okay, again, any other discussion concerning this? We're just approving the design.
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Questions agreed to. Let's pay the bills.
I think something, Phil and Stan, this came up yesterday, I think one of your officers mentioned it at Shaw Station, did they, they say Joe?
Yeah.
Tanks and so.
Yeah, they filled the tanks and they're just gonna run with the pumps open all the way, so.
So basically, they've got some gas that maybe they didn't, forgot to order.
Just get rid of the gas instead?
Yeah, the, maybe fulfilling a contract.
Maybe, yeah.
Well, you can't.
I believe so.
No idea.
I can't remember.
I'm just curious what's the long-term plan and.
When I saw those lights, the signs on, I, I could see people with pumps.
Is it available for sale?
I think not.
Yeah, it is.
Somebody, yeah, yeah, some.
Five percent, we think it had three, three point, three point some million, four point three or four point some million, for a whole lot of stock and barrel.
I suppose, yeah.
Tanks and everything.
Yeah.
Cost like two million to get rid of.
Just a, a speech coming up, a finance meeting on the 23rd, regular council on the 25th. Any other committees, of course, we're all.
Well, we're still, no, no.
Gonna do that. Any other things coming forward for any of the?
The variance thing is still hanging there.
Okay.
I think we've got some. Mayor, can we get Safety to meet again and discuss the, the extra, possibly the new coal person? I think that'd be a good idea, give us some time, give us some time to look over the information that Stan gave us and.
Yeah, we could plan, I don't know, are we looking at?
Want to shoot for before the council meeting on the 25th?
Once we.
Is that, I mean, yeah, wait. Standpoint, everyone's.
Yeah, you can direct for the council 25th, that's fine. Okay. Well, we plan on doing that, okay. Well, we plan on doing that. Okay. Five, she'd like.
Yeah, that's just, yeah, um, we'll make it work. But, um, so we get the, Angie's gonna be gone. And just getting those agendas off the top of your head that will, uh, we'll figure something out.
Come here for Thursday.
Okay.
That's okay.
Yep. This stuff is pretty standard.
I mean, finances.
So we're working the conference meeting.
You're gonna be back here, John? My dog misses you.
Are we ever gonna try to shoot? All of their goal?
You're vicious.
Someday.
I'm vicious, I like to buy them. No, I guess, I've, I've, I've been making a fair number of promises, man. Uh, this, this is gonna get taken care of before I leave. I feel like I had one of those.
I've been asking, I think that was my first.
Would something like make a motion concerning the vouchers?
Make the motion, repay the bills.
Second.
Motion second to approve the vouchers. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hayden.
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter.
Yes.
Councilmember Mayne B.
Yes.
Councilmember Raisler.
Yes.
Councilmember Weisler.
Yes.
Councilmember Weisler.
Yes.
Questions agreed to? Vouchers are approved. Any other future issues or agenda items? Not, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn? Motion second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.